Okay, so I'm going to call the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee, open meeting into session at 7:02 on Wednesday, April 15th, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. The meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public or parties with the right or requirements to attend this meeting can be found at our district website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch may do so in the following manner, and all of the channels are listed. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technology means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So our first item on the agenda is the action of minutes. So are there any questions regarding the minutes of our March 18, 2020 meeting?
Paul.
I would move that we approve the minutes of the open meeting of March, was it 18, 2020?
And I would second that.
All right, so Paul Bucka motion, and Dan Kalenda second. Is there any conversation changes or anything?
Oh.
Okay, so this has, it's a roll call, and I have everyone's name listed. So as I call you out, just say yes. So myself, Kathy, yes.
No.
Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
Lynn Winter?
Yes.
Okay, so our next is education policy, which there is none at the time. And the next item is new business. So the COVID-19 health situation.
So just wanted to give the committee an update on where the district is in terms of COVID-19 and the district's response. We continue to provide school lunches through our food services and cafeteria folks, as well as through the leadership of Keith LaVoy. Technology, we've deployed technology, as I shared with you at the last combined meeting. We do not have a significant amount of requests for new technology, but here and there, and we're distributing devices when situations arise with families. And I think at this point, we've launched NSborough Connect 2.0. Today is the seventh day of implementing the program. We are receiving feedback from families. As you can imagine, some families feel like it's too much. Some families feel like it's not enough. We're trying to find the balance and adjust accordingly. As a leadership team, we're taking the approach of we're going to survey faculty and staff to see how they think it's going. We're going to survey students. I think their perspective is essential. And then lastly, we're going to be surveying families and then taking that feedback and adjusting accordingly. I think overall, I think that it's going well. I think Marie and our Student Support Services team launched the Student Support Services portion of NSborough Connect 2.0, which has gone well. And Marie, I'm not sure if you want to speak to the first week of Student Support Services in NSborough Connect 2.0.
Sure, we did roll out what we called distance learning plans for all of our students, beginning at, starting to roll it out on April 6. And most parents should have received that plan now, and it is individualized per student. It is really a report of what the distance learning will look like for each of each student, and it may not be a one-to-one correspondence on the service delivery grids. So that is in the process of being rolled out. We have also rolled out the beginning of IEP team meetings, and we've put a process in place to start that, those team meetings moving forward. I think we had our first one in Southborough today, and we're going to continue to roll out in all three districts of the region as well very soon. So this week is more reaching out to parents, figuring out dates for IEP team meetings, and then we'll roll the actual meetings forward. We have received a lot of good feedback on the supports that students are receiving, but again, it's also a continuum based on families and what they're experiencing at home. So we're trying to be very cognizant of family needs as we roll plans forward, and plans will be adjusted as needed depending on the family situation.
So overall, I think that, you know, we've moved from launching NSborough Connect 2.0. Now we're looking, you know, what will the next couple of weeks, month, two months bring in terms of the educational experience for our students? Obviously, the next milestone date is May 4. That is when we're slated to return. I'm not confident that we will return at that date, but at this point, we're just waiting to get more information from Governor Baker. But are, all of our efforts right now are planning for the different scenarios, if we return or if there is an extended closure, and really preparing for any situation that might come our way. We're also spending a lot of time thinking about what impacts the COVID-19 health situation may have on our end-of-year positions in terms of fiscal year 20, as well as looking outward, looking at FY21, and just making sure that we're proactive revisiting every line item in preparation for the financial landscape changing at the state and town levels. So I'd be happy to answer any questions around the COVID-19 and district response.
Paul.
So I, Greg, you had mentioned that you were going to survey the students and the faculty and the parents about, you know, the efficacy of the Northborough-Southborough 2.0, and when is that going to happen?
So we, so we're convening a committee to actually design the survey. We don't think it's going to take that long to create these surveys, and our goal is to survey early next week, Tuesday or Wednesday. I mean, I think we need to do it sooner than later. You know, it's essential that we calibrate and adjust accordingly based on the feedback we receive from the surveys.
True.
I can't see everyone, so if you have a question, go ahead and ask.
I got a question, Paul Desmond. So are the teachers communicating with one another to sort of share tips? You know, what's working well, what maybe could be working better, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so Sarah, do you want to take that question?
Yes, so what, the way that it's structured for NSborough 2.0 Connect, the morning and the Fridays, we are still holding our formal professional learning communities and our co-teaching shared planning time. And what that's done is help them share various platforms that they're all navigating and trying and exploring to better meet student needs, as well as some new innovative tools, some interesting tools. For example, in Canvas, message board platforms, how they're modifying the curriculum is really important. It's not so much of giving the same amount of work, but being more focused on what work is going to have the highest leverage point for standards-based mastery. So all that is still going on. We have all of our formal meetings going on, as well as our support student meetings that happen every Friday for our at-risk students to make sure that we're engaging them. We also have the working policy that if for some reason a student is unable to engage in a live session with a teacher, and they have not been able to complete the work, educators immediately follow up with that student to make sure, one, that everybody is healthy, and then, two, how to better meet their needs. So that way, we're increasing the engagement around instruction.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Actually, I have a follow-up too. Is there any way to communicate with other districts, find out what other districts are doing, see if, you know, there's something terribly innovative going on somewhere that we hadn't thought about?
Kathy, I can answer that question. So we are obviously part of the Assabett Valley Collaborative. The superintendents meet frequently. We've met more frequently because of the COVID-19 situation. We are constantly sharing experiences and ideas. So we are in constant contact with the districts in our surrounding areas, as well as throughout the Commonwealth. And there's been a lot of sharing of ideas, cross-pollination of ideas that are working, ideas that are not working. So it's been a collegiate collaborative effort across the communities.
That's great, I'm glad to hear that.
Greg, this is Sean. I just want to say, I know it was said a bunch of times at the last meeting, but the teachers' work is tremendous, and I know how hard they're working. It's, you know, it took them years to learn how to teach in front of kids. Now they're learning how to teach in front of computers, you know, in a very short amount of time. And, you know, I gotta say, my son has been very engaged, which he wasn't during the other part. And they're doing a tremendous job of putting together learning and communicating with kids. So I just want to, you know, make sure that that positive is getting back there to you and to Sarah.
Yeah, I have to say, like, I have to say the same for Ella. I think that she's enjoyed getting back into classes and being able to see her teen, her school friends on a video and have a conversation with them. I think it's been really important socially-wise for them to have that, so. And it's a good session, I actually listened to some of it. Sometimes I want to like participate, but I know I can't.
Sean, I think that's an excellent point. Our teachers are the strength of the organization. You know, they're the closest to our students. They're the ones who can make the greatest impact, and they have. So I, too, echo, you know, there's a lot to be proud of in terms of the faculty and staff at Algonquin and how they've stepped up and really taken on this challenge.
Absolutely.
I have a question more for Marie. This is Lauren. So I'm particularly interested in students with intensive special needs and how they're finding the balances between the services in their schedule, as well as if they're in inclusion classes, how that's going. Do you have any feedback about that?
I have some feedback. We certainly at the, at the high school level, we are reaching out and doing more of the face-to-face for students, and it really depends on how available parents are to do some of that one-to-one with their students to help facilitate. So some are really accessing it very well, and other parents have said this is too much. So our teams are working with them. In addition, they're also doing a lot of the social interaction with our students, so they'll have group best buddies types of social events where they get together, and they, they have different dances and things. They'll sing, they'll do different things like that, and that has been going over very well. We have received positive feedback about social events that have been worked on with our kids with more significant needs. We are still, we're always working to reach more and more, extend our reach for the learning for those, that subgroup. And our teachers are more than willing to help, and parents are really very willing to help. It's really, do they have the ability?
Thank you, Marie. Greg, I had one more piece of feedback. I've really appreciated the health updates. I know that a newsletter was sent out today from Mary Ellen, the school nurses, and Dr. Medina. So I just wanted to praise them on that, and I think it's really great. They're getting sort of a cohesive message out to the school community, so thank you.
So we're very fortunate to have Dr. Medina, you know, who's extremely committed to the district, as well as Mary Ellen. You know, they've been outstanding throughout this, this experience, and they provided excellent leadership. So I, too, want to acknowledge their hard work, so thank you.
Okay, so our next, thank you. So our next item is the legislative update.
So just a quick update. The Ways and Means and Executive Office for Administration Finance held an economic roundtable yesterday afternoon, and the State Treasurer, Deborah Goldberg, spoke about the impact of COVID-19 on the economic climate. And she used analogy that the economy has been placed into a medical coma, which was a great analogy. And basically, the message that she gave was that Massachusetts has a $3.4 billion rainy day fund, which places Massachusetts in a much better position in 2020, and it's much more prepared to deal with economic crisis than they were in 2008 and 2009. However, they, they are predicting significant declines in state revenue, whether it's lottery taxes, lottery taxes, and so forth. I guess the gist of the presenters is that they don't have a good grasp of what's going to happen, that it's a fluid situation. And obviously, if a vaccine is, you know, discovered sooner, then that will impact the long-term economic climate. But what they're saying is that the House, the governor's House One budget, they're going back to the drawing board and starting over with a new context, and that they really don't think that, they're predicting they won't have an FY21 budget until sometime in the fall, which obviously significantly impacts the regional budgets. They're also anticipating that, you know, if town meetings do not take place in, by June 30, that regional districts will have a 1/12 budget. So if our two communities don't have town meetings and do not approve our regional budget, basically, we are given a, we're notified, we notify Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they set a 1/12 budget until the budgets are approved. So I think that the message is it's a very fluid situation that we have to wait and react to data as data becomes more available. And their recommendation, recommendation is plan, plan for the worst in terms of what could happen, and let the data speak for itself and adjust accordingly. So that was a helpful conversation, although we didn't learn anything new other than it's, you know, it's back to the drawing board in terms of the state budget and the fiscal climate and landscape.
Anybody have any questions? No?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Greg, what is the 1/12 budget based on? Is it based on last year's, this current year's budget, or?
Do we have to let them know what the school committee voted?
Okay.
Budget is, so it's based on the school committee-approved voted budget.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. I think it might be further down the list, but it has to do about, with town meetings. Do you know if there's any talk between either of the towns about doing it virtually, or whether any laws have changed regarding how town meetings are run?
So I, basically, the moderator is the only person who can set the date for town meeting, and the state statute basically says that town meetings can be extended by 30 days. So both communities, Northborough and Southborough, extended their town meetings by 30 days. So Northborough's planned town meeting is May 27, and Southborough's is May 16. I think the conversations that I've heard at the select board meetings in both communities is that's the furthest they could extend the date of their town meetings, and most likely, there will be another extension. And we're anticipating that town meetings will take place in June at some point. And I think that, based on my conversations with Mark Purpo, Town Administrator in Southborough, and John Cudar, Northborough, is that they're waiting to see what happens in terms of social distancing requirements and so forth. I'm not aware of any conversations that have taken internally with the towns around virtual town meetings.
So Greg, I can add a short update to that. So we absolutely have had those conversations about ways that we could allow town meeting to happen. It's very difficult to allow it to happen virtually because town meeting is supposed to allow that opportunity for residents to question their town leaders, to question items on the budget, which is incredibly difficult to do in a town, in a virtual session. So we've had many discussions about what other venues we could have, and I'm sure Northborough's doing the same thing, whether or not that could be an outside activity, whether it could be in multiple locations that are, you know, multiple schools that allow for people to still submit questions. So, and, you know, we're, we've raised the question to town council, as well as to our legislative representatives to see what opportunities might be available. Clearly, we want to at least get the money articles done before June 30 to the greatest extent we can. And so that's another idea that we had was to table any article. It was not a money article, so that we could do it in a very efficient manner. So anyway, those, those ideas, and Lauren, you've hit on, you know, exactly what we've been talking about is ways to make this happen so it does not impact town budgets.
Thank you so much, Dan.
Yep.
Okay, the next is our education stability program review.
So I'll have Marie Allen talk about, actually, it's the coordinated program review. I actually mislabeled this. So I do apologize, but Marie Allen will just give an update on the coordinated program review, which is a review cycle that we've been part of, which has changed a bit since the last view, which was two years ago. Marie, if you can give a brief update, that would be appreciated.
Sure, and that educational stability program review is actually another data collection point that we are required to report on at the end of this year. However, that basically works, it deals with McKinney-Vento and foster care. So that has been put on hold for now. And so instead, I want to talk about the coordinated program review, and it's now called tiered-focused monitoring. And that is what the state has done now. Instead of reporting every six years and then having a mid-cycle review, so we would, we would be going into a mid-cycle review right now because it's been, we're going into our third year. Instead of doing that, the state has decided that the new tiered-focused monitoring would be a system that's done every other year. So we are in phase one of that right now, and we are due to give a self-assessment to the state by June 8. However, it was originally May 1. They extended it to June 8, and there could be another extension. And what that involves is, based on our coordinated program review from last time, because of the results, and they were very good results, we have less special education indicators and less civil rights indicators to report on this time. So we have 10 special ed indicators and 17 civil rights indicators, and we're in the process of collecting data for that now, and it's all going to be done electronically and uploaded. And then after that self-assessment is put in the system and reviewed, depending on how that self-assessment comes out and is evaluated, they may or may not do an onsite for us for next year. So basically, the new system is smaller chunks of data that need to be collected, and that is really good news for all of us because it takes a lot less time to do this monitoring system. And then we'll just, we'll give an update. If June 8 does not end up being the self-assessment date, we'll definitely communicate that to everyone.
Does anybody have any questions? Trying to go through my screen, anyone? All right, thank you, Marie. Let us know how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
So our next is the 2020-2021 Handbook for Students and Parents.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Walsh and her team to present the handbook to the committee.
So the handbook this year was basically just updated, and that work was led by Assistant Principal McGowan. So I'll turn it over to Andy.
Sure, so as you can see, the red line stuff is all the edits that were made by us, the team at the school, which includes some students as well, and legal counsel and so forth. So some of the big changes were, most of it was pretty minor, but we did a schedule change in the sense of added a 10-minute mindful moment into the period rotation for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And we adjusted our homework policy, which is on page 31. So, and both of these reflect feedback from students and faculty alike of just providing opportunities for students to have a little more downtime during the day, not necessarily downtime, but have the opportunity to make connections with their peers, with faculty members in a little bit more of an informal, informal manner. So the other changes were, were legal counsel's recommendations and updates for various laws and so forth that have been updated or modified for the year. But overall, it's pretty, pretty minor in the sense of changes to the handbook.
Does anybody have any questions?
This is Sean. I had two things. One, I appreciate seeing that part in the homework policy, that change kind of formally in there about not giving, assigning homework or projects over vacation. So that was nice to see codified in there. The other question, just the changes in the discipline policy, or maybe it's just an update, was that run by legal? Just, I know it gets very complicated when students are suspended or not. There's a large section in that. Was that, was that based on legal advice?
Correct, yeah. That goes, that goes out to counsel, and the changes to, for the most part, the entire discipline section are legal counsel's updates.
Perfect, great.
Comment?
Yeah.
So Andy, I like to, I don't have, my students aren't in school anymore, but I do also appreciate the change to the homework, you know, policy because, you know, oftentimes, the kids would have like a test, you know, right when they return back from school, and, you know, it makes it difficult, you know, to get that recharge or, you know, long-term assignments due shortly after. So I think that's really important, a really important change to, you know, give that vacation what it's supposed to be. And so, but thank you for your work and the work of the students and every, and faculty who were involved in this process. I think, I know it's a lot of work to review, to review the entire thing, so thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question?
Yeah?
If I may, this is Kathleen. In following with the comment that Sean had to make about children who have been suspended, I had somebody speak to me at one time that having the children come back into the school, that she felt that there needed to be teachable moments, there needed to be support with behaviorists, and that was a missing piece, that just leaving the school was not sufficient in advancing the behaviors. and that was a missing piece, that just leaving the school was not sufficient in, in advancing the behaviors of her son. And I was just wondering about that aspect to it, because I didn't see anything specifically regarding the transition back.
So that's kind of handled on a case-by-case basis, because each situation can be unique in its own sense and so forth. But guidance counselors are always involved and, and other counselors and so forth, and we look at other resources that we can provide the student and the family to provide those wraparound services so that when they come back, it is a teachable moment and an educational experience for that, for the student. Our goal is not just to discipline, it's to provide an educational opportunity through the experience for both student and family and, and so forth, so.
Part of our process, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, part of our process, no matter what the reason is, if there's any disciplinary action that might lead to in-school or out-of-school suspension, we always involve families and look to find out kind of if there's any underlying issues that might lead to needing additional support. So we do always work hand-in-hand with guidance and adjustment counselors if necessary. Always with specialized students, work with liaisons and families. So we, we do treat them on a case-by-case basis, but always look to offer support to help them re-enter school without issues.
Good, I appreciate that clarification, and then if it's alright, Kathy, I have another question. For page 43, number five, regarding cell phones, wondering after the distribution of much technology for the sheltering in place, perhaps in knowing that there was a need, expecting, it appears that it's expecting that students have smartphones so that teachers can specifically authorize them to use it for these reasons, and, and it does not sound like that's equitable yet.
So Kathleen, Dr. Howen, I can respond, but I don't think I understood your question. Are you saying that we're requiring kids to have cell phones in order to access certain opportunities and learning?
It looks like that on number five.
So I don't necessarily think that that's the purpose of number five. It's cell phones and/or electronic devices. The students and educators are pretty savvy about either leveraging a Chromebook, a laptop, based on bring-your-own-device, a cellphone if that's an easier device for students to engage in it. But we have some families that ask that students do not have technology at home, cell phones being one of them, actually Chromebooks, they don't want a Chromebook in their home, and so that's why we offer the opportunity for them to sign it out at the library on a case-by-case basis. But that's not the intention to have all students have a cellphone. And when it comes to the rules and the use of the cell phones, because teachers are very creative in how to leverage those opportunities, we do leave it up to their discretion. But they are very good about saying and posting sometimes on their door, you know, you will need this device or you will need to be able to access Kahoot today. So students may at that time offer to go get an iPad or a Chromebook.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Walsh.
So I had to say, Ella really enjoyed, for a period of time, you guys have had the mindful moment. I think it's a, a nice idea to have the kids have that, just so they can, you know, if they're not in classes with their friends or whatever, they have like that little bit of time to catch up and have a conversation. And it's a nice addition to the schedule.
Is, is the mindful moment teacher-directed, or is it an individual-type activity?
So it can be, it actually plays out more of an individualized opportunity. So teachers, in some cases, will offer support services, intervention work, access to materials, support on, you know, some work that students are doing. Coaches and advisors will do the same, and students have been found to leverage that time to meet their individual need. Just like Ms. Key spoke, some students choose it as a decompressing moment, which is perfect. You know, it's definitely an opportunity our kids need within this fast-paced life. So it really does vary. Some of our students actually use that time to visit the nurse to get their medication, so they're no longer missing class. So I don't feel comfortable saying it's teacher-directed or specifically student-directed. They're high school students, and we have to trust them to make the best choices. And I really praise both and commend our staff and our students, because in the short time that we did have it offered, it was getting amazing positive feedback, and students were making really positive choices with that time.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
I had a question, if I could, on, on page 52, in the drugs and alcohol policy. The last sentence is an addition that says, "Students attending school-sponsored extracurricular events and activities may, with prior notice, also be subject to alcohol detection monitoring as a condition of their participation." So, I mean, in the, the sentence before, it talks about where there's reasonable suspicion. Is this saying, you know, whether there's reasonable suspicion or not?
So this was legal counsel's, a legal counsel addition here. It would all fall under the reasonable suspicion if, if we were doing a search or, or any kind of test for alcohol consumption or anything like that.
Okay, I think that could be clearer, because the way I read it, it was like, you know, if we, well, it does say with prior notice, so I mean, it sounded like we're gonna test everybody for alcohol to attend, you know, X, Y, Z event.
I think that that might also afford us the opportunity, not that it's been anything that we've discussed, if, if we were to decide at an event, there'd be some kind of alcohol detection at, upon entry. As a condition to, as a condition to enter, you would be subject to, just in my previous district, that's actually what we did at every event, like, especially dances, things like that. We, we would have 600 or 400 students come through and all blow into the alcohol, the Alka-Blo device as they entered.
But that is not something that, and I appreciate Tim's perspective, that is not something that we have discussed that we would be doing at Algonquin. This goes within what Andy is speaking about, of having reasonable suspicion. For example, we do bring the Alka-Blo to some of our more larger dances, but only use it if, if we even need it at all, if we suspect a student under the influence, while also contacting their parent for safety reasons. So Greg, I would defer this one to Attorney McAvoy, but we would be operating under reasonable suspicion.
Yeah, I think it's fine if you're operating under reasonable suspicion, I just think that could be clearer in that, in the, in the addition that we're making here.
I have a comment. So I, I think it also may be written there in case someone questions. I mean, from lawyers like to try to allow you to cover all your bases, and so in case question, someone questions about whether reasonable suspicion was warranted or not, at least, you know, this way from a league, a lawyer wants you to be able to cover everything. So then, if anyone was to challenge whether the reasonable suspicion was sufficient, then that would kind of cover us, I think, possibly.
So.
A comment around, I think that to Tim's point, that it does leave it open-ended. If, if it was decided that, you know, some type of screening upon entry to an event is necessary or required, that, that this allows for that to happen. However, it'd be a change of practice for Algonquin and what happens, and would be a much larger conversation around why we would do that. So Lynn's point, it does, it does leave that window open for us, or that door open for us to be able to institute such a practice. However, it would, there'd be much conversation and discussion with a committee in the community before anything like this would take place.
So just a quick, so Ella is taking a gov, her AP gov class right now, and they didn't have a discussion over this, it was a college conversation they were having. Something came out about a college and a player that was under suspicion, and it went back to like the Constitution and your rights as an individual. So I'm not sure parents, and maybe they would be fine having their kids blow into a barthalyzer before they go into an event, but I don't, I'm not quite sure that's legal to ask that. Sorry.
I'll just, I'll just add, Kathy, we could actually spend hours talking about this.
No, I, I, I know we could have this.
You know, and, and honestly, I, you know, the, the language read fine to me, and I think we should have that flexibility. I agree with our superintendent that it would be a much larger discussion in the event that we were to institute something that was dramatically larger, unfortunately, in, in too many schools. And as, as Tim has mentioned, that is a reality. I hope we never have to get there, but for the safety of our students, you know, we've all seen too many instances where alcohol and drugs and kids have resulted in death. I have no interest in seeing that happen at my high school on my graduation night. So I could care less about, you know, i- individual rights at, at, at this particular juncture. I mean, I'm worried about that those two kids who are driving home, as my buddies were, and were killed by a drunk driver on graduation night, that's what I'm worried about. Not, you know, if, 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 honestly, if I did nothing wrong, I'll blow into a tube every day, and I would have no issue with that. So we could spend hours talking about this, and, and we could have some pretty passionate conversations about individual rights, but I like the flexibility that was here, it's been reviewed by council, I think it makes good sense. And I agree with our superintendent that we, if we as leaders thought that we had to go in a, in a, in a larger scale for certain events, then you know what, we'll have those discussions at the time. This gives us that flexibility to do just that with safety of all of our students at the forefront.
Just also, I think as far as students' rights, you know, there, there is, they have less rights than at a school event or a school property than, than just out in the world.
I, I totally understand that. I'm not, I, I, I get that wholeheartedly.
Yeah, no, I just, I know, I just pointed out that.
I'm not.
Because this case law has been studied, has been, has been decided on that, so. That's just a point.
No, I, yeah.
This is, this is Sean, there's only one, one question I have, well, one comment I would make on that, and it's not to impede this or vote on this or anything at this time, but maybe for future, for legal to look at. Where it says drugs and alcohol is the heading, it only specifies alcohol as a monitored substance or monitored. And I know it's more difficult to check for other substances, but there's substantial training going on. I don't know if anything needs to be added in there to, to say it's not just alcohol, but potentially drugs too. Maybe something for legal to look at, at a future revision of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Sean. I think that that's something that we can look at down the road with legal counsel and what, what they're seeing also in various schools around the state too. So, thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah?
It's Kathleen, could you, Scott, speak to the dress and personal appearance changes that were made, the omissions and the additions, please?
Kathleen, what page is that on?
It is 57.
So these recommendations were per feedback of the student, the students who joined us for this. And it was a collaborative effort between the, the adults involved in this and the, and the students. So the language that we looked at, just changing here, was really just kind of an update more than anything to be a little more, some of it was repetitive, the, the redline stuff that was crossed out was, some of that was repetitive, but mostly it was per some student feedback on things that they felt were being looked too closely at or, or for lack of a better way of putting it, and that's really the reason behind this. So this was a collaborative effort with the students on the dress, dress code and so forth.
Yeah, I find that interesting and challenging, certainly as a college professor, the way that people have come into classes, or even when I've been to the high school and seen the way that people were dressing for concerts. So I, I just was curious about that, that, that sure would be dicey, given the styles of the day, but perhaps that's one of the benefits of the virus, we don't, don't have to deal with that, can let it be at home.
Okay, anyone else? So our next is Program of Studies Guide Review.
So I will turn this also over to Dr. Walsh to give an overview.
Thank you. So for the Program of Studies, there were some, my Google Doc just froze, some minor updates. The, I don't know what's going on here. Some of the original work that we started a few years back of basically cleaning up our Program of Studies has continued into this year, and so what does that mean? In previous years, we've put every possible option of an elective in our Program of Studies, and then for obvious reasons weren't able to run them. So you would have students signing up for multiple classes that then would not run, and that was very difficult for some of our students, because then they would have a schedule change and/or have a sense of loss, because they wouldn't be able to take the class that they wanted to sign up for. So in working with guidance in the department chairs and looking at an overall trend analysis of what courses did and didn't run, we have retired some courses or put them on a rotation. So for example, if a course was able to run maybe one time per year and was semester-based, we'll run it in the fall and will run a different course in the spring. And then that way, more students can have more opportunities and enroll in more courses. Another update to the Program of Studies was, we looked at some of the courses that were consistently under-enrolled and/or not as relevant anymore, and we retired those towards the back of the Program of Studies. And all that means is that as we look at course requests and student needs and economy and global needs and preparing our students for college, those courses are still there, they're viable, they have viable curriculum, we're just not gonna be running them that year. So you'll see that happen. That helped us then to realign our resources. And as we retired a course, you would see us add in a new, new course, something that would be more relevant, something that might afford students the opportunity to develop more analytical skills, be more globally competitive and more prepared for college. We did also, also some pathway alignments, and this was a long time coming. So for example, one pathway that we worked on this year was early childhood studies. Students in the past would take multiple early childhood classes and get towards the end of their career in studying that pathway, and not necessarily have a certificate or be able to work in a daycare. Starting next year, that's gonna be a possibility. So as students move through the Early Childhood Pathway Studies Program under Applied Arts Department, they will graduate that pathway certified, their senior and freshman college years to go right into a daycare and have work available to them and something that they enjoy doing. That same concept is being applied to our culinary arts, we're looking to expand that and have a certification for that, where students can have the required trainings to work in a kitchen. And I know that Ms. Pathas, the department chair, is working on the same opportunity in accounting and for finance. So that's a couple of years out, but it just shows the progression that we're working with our pathways. We've moved computer science from our math department into our applied arts department. That was extremely intentional. We had a multi-year process of advancing some of our digital literacy curriculum. And some of that work is including more computer science opportunities with our freshman Computer Essentials class, and then building that work to support the growth of the computer science program. Mr. Forhans moved over into the Applied Arts Department, and we'll be running a professional learning community next year as we advance computer science programming in Computer Essentials course, as well as digital literacy skills throughout the program. Very, very exciting work there. And finally, we are prepared to launch Mass Core, we could be completely aligned with Mass Core. But that would be a change in the graduation requirements for our freshman class, and this just was not the year to add in any changes. And this just was not the year to add in any changes for our students next year. So with the work being prepared, it's ready to launch. It's something that next year's administration can go ahead and move forward with and presenting it to school committee with more time.
Thanks, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions?
One, and and a comment as well. I mean, I'm thrilled about the certification stuff for for daycare and the like. I think that's a terrific addition. I'm curious about the the classes that you say, Sarah, are still viable but not offered. And and I guess, I guess, you know, keeping them around, there's certainly the the inference that you guys are somehow tracking the requests you get for those courses so that maybe a year from now, you realize that, gee, there were, there were eight kids that wanted to sign up for Class X. Maybe we shouldn't be retiring it after all. We should, we should bring it to the forefront again. Or I mean, is there a, is there a tracking mechanism for all that that's in place?
So that's a really good point, Paul. So what we're doing is, is like, we have our multi-year analysis that we're looking at. And what we found is, based on students' entry points in various electives and in pathways, some courses become more prevalent versus other courses. So that's exactly what's going to happen in that, you know, if you have a woodworking class and it's competing with maybe a metal shops class, we're going to run them at different times, but still cycle through it over kind of a four-year period so students can have the opportunity.
Got it, okay.
It actually increases the amount of electives a student could possibly take because you minimize the competitions that are happening right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Walsh, I want to echo Paul's point. I think that it's quite amazing that, you know, you're really looking for these pathways for certificate programs. You know, vocational and trade schools are sort of like a hot topic in Massachusetts right now. And I think that's really allowing our students some alternative pathways and then success as soon as they graduate. So thank you for rallying for those programs in our school.
Thank you. And I do, I do want to give credit to the educators and the department chairs. It was a multi-year process. It wasn't something that just happened. And so it's just a true testament to the teamwork that happens at Algonquin.
I had, I had one comment. First of all, I'm just continue to be impressed by the the depth and breadth of offerings at Algonquin. It's, it's just nothing short of remarkable. But I I do have one thing that I I still don't understand. I think we're in the second year, maybe the first year, of the combined freshman CP and Honors US History. And, you know, it used to be separate, and now it's just one unleveled course that everyone takes. And I, I just don't understand why that change was made and how, you know, how we're making the case that's, you know, that we're still adequately challenging the more advanced kids who normally would have been in an honors class. You know, I, I guess I just would encourage you to take a look at that.
And and so, Paulie, I appreciate that push, actually, having the opportunity to work with Ms. Burns and seeing the work come to life. Brittany, Ms. Burns, will will give you an in-depth essay quoting specific research. Specific to Algonquin, though, we have found that we have an increased number of students being able to sign up for and be successful in our history advanced placement classes because there are no prerequisites in history. So not only have we opened the door for more students to be involved in advanced placement, they're doing better. We have also found that by unleveling the history classes at the freshman level, more students are accessing the honors level curriculum, if not above that. So we're able to better differentiate and actually individually challenge students versus tracking them into specific levels and and sections. So we've actually been able to not only close some of the achievement gap on that work, but also advance some of our students in their thinking and their learning to perform even higher at the next level. We have some anecdotal data from our sophomore teachers saying that freshmen are coming in more prepared and better challenged. So that actually speaks to that. And some additional anecdotal data is a few years before I arrived, we had freshman teams. The research is profound on the benefit of freshman teams. For various reasons, Algonquin moved away from freshman teams, but we ended up losing some of the benefits of it. Big group brings some of those benefits back to Algonquin students. So just to kind of sum it up, not only are we challenging students at a greater level, we're pushing them even more. We're doing better at our advanced placement overall performance and students in their sophomore year are having more academic success.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Sarah, did you want me to touch on the scheduling?
Yes, so I apologize, Ms. Key. I would love for Tim to have a moment to talk about how we've decreased some of the competition between our classes and it's actually made our scheduling more efficient. And Tim is going to be taking on the scheduling for next year. And I think that's really important for school committee to hear about how we're continuing that work. And we fully anticipate opening in August and having a wonderful launch to the school year. So, Tim, if you wanted to talk about it briefly?
Yeah, sure, just briefly. And, you know, you might remember me as the former MCAS coordinator. So this year I've started in the role as the master scheduler. And it's mostly been a learning year because the schedule was completed, you know, before the year started. So it's been a great experience, not only with learning the process, but also getting to know the different systems and the the really well-designed calendar that we follow. It's pretty much a year-long calendar. You heard Sarah talk about how we take a close look at the Program of Studies. That's really kind of the start of the scheduling calendar for the year. Once that's done, we have to then reconcile iPass in our course calendar in iPass with the changes that have been made in the Program of Studies with the new courses and other change courses. So just with the major disruption that we've had of not, you know, being able to meet in person, it's, it's good to know and to say that we have still managed to stay on schedule with planning for course selection. The course selection period for students came and went, and the override period came and went all pretty much on the same schedule, even though it was completed online. Department chairs now are looking through what the tallies were for what students selected for courses. And and as Sarah mentioned, because of the streamlining, we're really going to be able to focus on, you know, filling classes that are, you know, have a bigger impact on our students that will help develop their skills and help meet their goals, such as MCAS and things like that. But so it it just taking that piece out of the process where we have maybe some courses that are in there that haven't been too successful in getting filled or enrolled. We don't have to work with, you know, taking those, those courses out after the students already selected the course. So it streamlines it quite a bit, which is beneficial to everybody involved, especially, as I mentioned, that we're doing a lot of this online and not in person. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good news. And we're, we're finding that it's making it an easier process to get through. Also, we do have on the horizon a change to our scheduling system to Power School and Power Schedular. So that's something that we're also looking at after the department chairs put together their schedules for their classes and they get approved and agreed to loading that into the Power Schedular and then doing our build for next year's master schedule in Power School. So hopefully, we can get that if, if for whatever reason it seems not to be something that'd be a smoother transition with what the environment looks like right now. We're ready to build an iPass and have master schedules completed for teachers by the end of the school year.
Can I ask one quick question? So you were talking about MCAS. Assuming that they're not, they're not going to happen right now, assuming they're not. Is there talk about them having them in the fall or next spring? And if so, will you guys have like a refresher course for those kids that have to take the MCAS for courses for the year that they should have taken this year?
Yeah, that's how, if I, okay, go ahead.
So I'll just say that the commissioner.
Makes sense.
The commissioner just did announce that they are suspending MCAS for the spring of two thousand twenty. And the commissioner just announced that if it were up to him that MCAS will not take place in the fall, his position is that, you know, we've lost enough learning time and that taking a high-stakes assessment would take, again, more time away from learning than than it should. So I think the position is there will not be MCAS this, the spring and most definitely not in the fall. So I think we'll see the next cycle in the spring of twenty-one.
Greg, I, I think that he also announced they're looking at the competency determination part of that too, correct?
Correct. I think, Tim, you probably could speak to some of our seniors who who have not yet received the results for the competency determination for graduation.
So, Greg, that would be Andy.
Andy.
And we, yep, and we did go over the list very specifically if we needed to speak about different scenarios.
So I think the good news is we have very few students who are waiting to hear. So it's, it's a handful of students, and I think we're waiting for those hopes to arrive shortly. Sarah, is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate. We have, and Andy can speak to the actual specific test that they took. We had quite a few success stories, which was really amazing. Very, very limited numbers of students who needed to pass the exam. But Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that our current seniors who may not have passed one of the retests are waived this year.
I believe that's correct. And and to Greg's point too, the handful is is truly close to that exact number, a handful of students that we're still waiting on. So it's a very small percentage of this class of twenty twenty that we're waiting to hear back from.
This is Sean. Again, I think in terms of MCAS, I think there's a lot the state is going to have to yet determine because the sophomores have missed their opportunity for it, for the competency determination tests, their first chance out of five, I guess it is. And and then in terms of setting benchmarks levels for schools to attain, I think, I think the state has quite a ways to go, and I'm not sure they've even tackled it yet.
But I do want to address Ms. Key's concern. We do talk about this in the school-based leadership team meeting, Kathy. We are aware of it. We do have a major fear of them giving us yet another testing window next year because it would be loss of learning time. But know that the department chairs are aware of it. We already do some pretty proactive interventions for our students who are doing retesting, and we seem to get that to work in pretty fine. So I have no doubt that if we were going to have to do another testing window for a specific grade that we could figure it out.
So I just, so I guess my, my concern is that, and maybe this, maybe they'll, who knows what the department app will do, but the sophomores that were supposed to take their, because sophomores were taking something this year, right?
Yes.
So those kids are now going to go take SATs and ACTs and then have to worry about passing MCAS. You know, it's just a, it's just going to be, you know, just something to think about when it comes to scheduling and stuff, that's all.
There'll also very likely be more students enrolled in more AP courses, which have their exams about the same time in the spring.
Yeah.
A lot to think about.
So. So our next is the, let me see, the superintendent's report to the school committee.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Walsh. As the committee knows, spring is a extremely busy time for a high school from now until the last day of the academic year. And I know that the leadership team in Algonquin has been thinking creatively outside of the box, how they can create some of those experiences for our students that are are being lost because of COVID. So I've asked Sarah if she could just give a brief report around some of the thinking that the team is doing as well as speak to athletics and what we know about athletics as of today.
Okay, thank you, Greg. I will start with athletics. A.D. Masarino has prepared a multi-stage process, depending on if we come back on, if and when, I got to be positive, we come back on May, in May, we would be able to run a full spring season minus some tournament play. So we are prepared to do that for our students. We are of the mindset of hope and that we really want to make sure we can offer this to our athletes, especially our senior athletes. If for some reason there's a delay in coming back and we come back kind of in the middle of May, we would not be able to run a full spring season. However, we could run a truncated season and do some inter-classic competitions with some other high schools in our league, and the other AGs are on board. If we have an even more condensed season, we are going to offer an intramural opportunity for students so that our student athletes, you know, that's what some motivates, some markets to be engaged in school, have the opportunity to engage. Without actually doing a spoiler alert, I know that the spring coaches, fall and winter coaches, along with A.D. Masarino and his staff, are working on some pretty ingenious ways to recognize their senior athletes. They're working on that now, and I don't want to give too many details because they're really excited about what they're doing and they plan to share it sooner than later. They want to make sure they especially recognize the seniors because normally we'd be doing all these great senior nights that we may not have the opportunity to do. So that's important to talk about. In addition to that, I know that our coaches, John Driscoll, our athletic trainer, they're offering lifting opportunities, inter-team meetings and workouts, but it's all virtual. So they're, they're continuing to thrive in the world of athletics. For our clubs, what's going on now is some of our clubs have taken some of their fundraiser events and their opportunities, and they're doing them virtual e-version fundraiser events. Many of our clubs just started meeting again this week. They were very focused on the NSboro two-point-oh Connect launch last week, which we wanted their focus to be on that. We didn't want to add any more variables. So you're going to see some of the events that we missed and some of the upcoming events, they're turning to a virtual opportunity and bring our community together that way. As an administrative and leadership team, through Greg's support, we listed every possible spring event Algonquin normally hosts, sorted them by chronologically, and we're going through step by step. One of the examples I can give is right now our junior prom has a date later on in the spring and a date in the fall. We've already made sure that we can have the venue, we can reschedule as needed, and that our juniors would not miss that opportunity. So that's already locked in. Thank you to Ms. Burns and Mr. Staines and the junior class advisors for, for Junior Class Student Council for helping do that. In addition to that work, we're doing the same concept with our senior events. So we're looking at, during May first is ring the bell. Many students, you know, wear their college shirt and they ring the bell. It's a very exciting moment. Admissions has been delayed for colleges, so we're looking at pushing that off a month. Hopefully, we can have the seniors in the school and doing that. But if not, we've got some virtual ideas already set up for that work. Greg and Andy have entertained some of my crazy ideas about graduation. We've got some, we really want to make sure that we hear our students. They want to have the opportunity to walk across that stage. Obviously, healthy, you know, being safe and so forth. And so we have everything from a completely virtual version of a graduation to finding a way to set it up so that there's still social distancing and they're able to walk across the stage and and producing a live feed. So out of respect for what our seniors are asking, this has been a difficult year for them. We are finding a way to make sure that we celebrate them and that we meet their needs. Our Fine Arts Department, as of right now, all of their events are still on. And just a reminder, we have our improv show, you know, we have our pops night, some other events. The goal is to launch all of those, including our spring art show. But if not, you know, a lot of that work and that club work is already going on virtually, and we'll find a way to bring the community together and share it out as well. So some of it is still up in the air, rightfully so, because we don't have any finalities about dates of return. But know and please share with students, families, stakeholders, community members that we are finding a way to celebrate each, each of those events. We don't want to lose them. That's really important for us. It's one of the amazing aspects, one of the many amazing aspects for Algonquin. Any questions?
So can I start? Since I have a senior and I have questions twenty-four hours a day about what's happening, and I can't tell her anything and I can't make her feel better because it's an awful feeling for her. And I know that Greg has a senior too, so he knows what I'm talking about. So she, I don't think it's fair to have a, I, I understand the virtual part of things. I think that we either hold off until the summer or do something like the day after Thanksgiving for graduation if we can't figure something out. Because I think that, I, I just don't think that a virtual graduation is going to really celebrate the kids as it should. I I just don't think that a virtual graduation is going to really celebrate the kids as it should. And this is like per, this is like the kids that are, you know, Ella and her friends. I understand we're trying to help them out and stuff, but I do think that we have to figure out a way to at some point in time, really celebrate these kids after being in school for 13 years and being able to, you know, graduate with their friends. And even seniors, like the senior sport thing for that, you know, Ella's like, Mom, she goes, even if you had like, just put us six feet apart on a football field or whatever. Just if you can't play sports, just for the senior night or whatever it is. And I understand the whole health piece of it. I'm just telling you from a a senior's point of view.
And so something that's, as you know, and you can speak to Ms. Key, our seniors have done a phenomenal job at reinventing some of the senior events. And they've been working with Ms. Mall and Ms. Philbin about making sure that their requests are heard. So Andy and I actually have a meeting with the senior advisors tomorrow to make sure as we throw out different ideas about graduations, senior nights, senior awards night is another one that's a big event. And ringing the bell that all of those requests are are, we meet them to the best of our ability. No matter what we do though, it's going to be a change and it's mitigating the feeling of loss in that change.
Okay.
If I could, this is this is Paul. Like one of the things that Dan Kalenda talked about earlier was Southboro talking about having to use maybe multiple buildings for town meeting to spread the crowd out. And I'm wondering if Northboro is thinking along the same lines and if they've talked to us at all about using our facility as maybe one of those buildings. And I wonder if that technology has some potential use around a graduation day exercise as well where, you know, everything could happen, but maybe people are watching on screens as they do now in our in our what, in our auditorium, I think during the during graduations that that I've been to in the past. I mean, there were other buildings as well that you know, that are going to be used maybe for a kind of a town meeting sort of scenario that we could piggyback on that technology for graduations. I would kind of throw that out there and just as a thought. And then the other question that I had was have we collected athletic fees for spring sports?
So we have not actually collected and taken money for athletic fees for spring sports. We have taken some other fees that in conversation with Greg and Becky, we are discussing, you know, what to do with those for next step, but nothing for athletic. And then to speak about the technology for graduation, the latest and greatest idea that Greg and they have entertained for me is actually using the different parking lots in Algonquin and spreading our crowd out that way. And Northboro Cable Access and Kathy Daglides, I think is on this Zoom meeting are phenomenal and entertaining my ideas and are willing to work on how to spread that out. We could definitely do some seriously good social distancing while still giving kids the opportunity to walk across the stage. And I think that physical walk across the stage is really important for families and that student to have that moment.
Great.
Anyone else? All good? All right. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Greg. Greg, you're on, you're on mute.
So next in your packet is the enrollment report for March and there are no significant variances from last month. And at this time I'll have Becky speak about the March monthly expenditure report. And also I'm going to have Becky give you a brief overview of of how COVID-19 has impacted our FY20 budgets and what we're projecting in terms of expenditures and savings through the remainder of the year. So I'm going to turn it over to Becky.
Greg, did you want me to share my screen?
Sure. Hang on one second.
Okay, can everyone see my screen? Not that you can all respond at once, but so I just wanted to give the committee an overview of some of the areas that we are closely monitoring as we go through the closure due to COVID-19 pandemic. There are a few areas that we're very, well, there are a lot of areas that we're watching closely, but a few in particular that I wanted to highlight for you tonight. So some of the unanticipated expenses that the district incurred as a result of COVID-19 included some custodial expenses. If you recall, the weekend of March 7th and 8th, we had our custodial crew into clean thoroughly clean the school over the weekend. And we also brought in our cleaning company that we also contract with. So that weekend, there were $2,940 in overtime and also cleaning company expenses. In addition to that, we have also purchased a number of cleaning supplies and also nursing supplies. So we had purchased disinfectant machine and the supplies that went along with that machine. We have been purchasing gloves and face masks. We had hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes and spray bottles that were purchased as part of this cleaning project. And then we've also made some technology purchases. There were scanners that were purchased for employees so that the remote work could continue to go on. As you know, we also purchased a license through DocuSign, which enables us to do the electronic warrant signatures. And we had to expand our VPN licenses again to allow employees to do some of their work remotely. So in total, those things added up to $15,947. We also have the potential for some future expenses. And speaking with Julie Doyle and the tech team, we could potentially see some technology replacement and or repair costs as we have been loaning out devices to families for the remote learning. We also, depending on when we return and what the protocols are in place, we're wondering about the purchase of further masks and or gloves. If that is going to be warranted for students to report to return to school. And then also unemployment costs. At this point in time, all of our employees are being paid as we discussed at the combined school committee meeting. However, we have seen former employees who have filed for unemployment and because they were employed by us within the past 12 months, they report us as a former employer. We have not seen any costs that have been incurred to us, but we are being mindful of that and making sure that we are checking that on a daily basis. In terms of savings, since we are closed, we are not utilizing some of the services that we had encumbered. So you can see from this spreadsheet, I've broken it down for the first two months of the closure up until the May 4th tentative return date. And then also put in some estimates if we were to remain out for the remainder of the school year. Electricity and heating are two of our biggest areas where we could potentially see some savings. Obviously, while we're maintaining heat at the building, we don't need to keep it at the level where people are in the building. And we're certainly not using the electricity levels that we would if we had a school full of students. Water and sewer is another area where we will see a reduced cost. The athletic transportation, I included that for May and June because depending on if we do return on May 4th, which as Dr. Walsh said, we are hopeful that we will, we may have some costs incurred for athletic transportation. However, if we are remaining out for the remainder of the school year, then we would have the savings of $23,000. We also have other transportation, so activities and field trips that may not be placed as a result of the closure. And then instructional materials. So there are some, I know in science classes where maybe there are items that need to be purchased close to the time of using them in the classroom because they are perishable and other materials that will no longer be needed that were accounted for for the remainder of the year. And then finally, substitute teachers. We will not be needing the services of substitute teachers because we are not in session. So if we were to remain out for the entire year, you would see a $37,000 savings. So in total, or in subtotal, I guess, for the May 4th date, you're looking at about a $61,000 savings just in these particular line items. And then for the entire school year, you it would be about 170,000. There are other line items that we are looking at. And it's harder for us to get kind of a tangible number on that, one being like our our rubbish removal because we do pay by the ton. And so that is something that is harder for us to gauge, but we do also anticipate a savings of that line item. So just to kind of give you an overview of the potential savings versus the expenses that we know to date. If with the May 4th closure, we would see a net budget impact to the good of $45,540. And if we were to stay out for the remainder of the year, then we are looking at $154,000 to our bottom line. And again, these are just projections. The other piece I wanted to talk about was our food service. I know we touched on this briefly at our combined meeting. But I am confident that Algonquin, Diane Koffer, who is our manager here, does a great job. And their revolving account has been very healthy. And so I am confident that that account will be sufficient to cover any expenses, our salary expenses and the loss of revenue. We are hopeful, we are hearing word that there may be a potential reimbursement for our salary expenses. And we are also grateful that the USDA did waive our ability to be reimbursed for these lunches because we are a district that has less than 50% population of free lunches lunch. So that will certainly help with the expenditure of the foods that the food services that we are purchasing right now. But you can see that if we already come back on May 4th, that we will have lost about $75,000 in revenue. And our salary expenses are about $52,000. For the end of the year, we would lose about 150,000 in revenue and our salary expenses would be $95,000. And Dr. Walsh was just talking about the spring athletics. Our spring coach salaries are paid through our operational budget. There are a few line items in our operational budget and that is one of them. So at this point in time, we have $121,020 remaining in that line item. Our spring coach salaries themselves, as you can see, if we were to pay them out, are actually $101,221. So we're looking at some different scenarios based on when spring sports return in terms of what a spring coach salary might look like. And again, we're kind of waiting to see when students actually return and when the spring season can actually begin again. We also, our revenues, we, this is based on last fiscal year. We potentially could lose 62,000 in revenues and that is through those spring fees that, no, we have not started to collect as of yet. Some of our essential vendors, so we are currently negotiating with some of our vendors. We talked about our regular education transportation. We, Greg, Keith and I did speak with John McCarthy, the owner of NRT on Monday. And we are trying, working out a a a final agreement with him. And he also is the owner of NRT now, which is our special education transportation vendor. We contract through Assabett Valley Collaborative. We are part of a purchasing collaborative there. And so we are working with Assabett Valley Collaborative and also on our own to hammer out a reduction in our fees that we will be paying for the transportation. I will say that NRT has been fabulous in terms of the delivery of meals and also technology to our families. And while they have been great, obviously they're not providing the same level of service that they would be if school were in session. The other vendors that we're going to be working with are are out of district special education residential programs. Marie and Kate Clark and I had a conversation and we have been going through each of our out of district placements. I know Marie and her team are looking to see what services are still being provided to our students. And we have identified four residential programs that we will be reaching out to to negotiate with. Two of them have actually closed their residential programs. And so students are back at home and are receiving home services, but they're obviously not receiving the residential portion that it was ultimately or that was required of them. And then there are two other placements that the parents actually decided to bring their students home. And so they are receiving home services, but again, they are not providing the residential program. So those are some companies that we are working with. You probably hear a lot about the CARES Act. Massachusetts is slated to receive $199.2 million in CARES Act fund specifically for schools. Those funds will be distributed based on Title I allocations to districts. So we are monitoring that and await news from the governor and from Desi on how those funds will be distributed. We are also looking at other reimbursements. So FEMA, we have enrolled with FEMA and we'll be submitting some of these unanticipated expenses to them. We have also filed a business interruption claim with our insurance provider, Myo. And as I stated before, USDA is providing reimbursement for the meals that we are providing to our families. So with that, if anyone has any questions about COVID-19 and the impact that it's having on our budgets.
I have one, Rebecca, if I could.
Yep.
So what what would the insurance claim be? It it looks to me like we're making money by being closed, not not losing money. What are we, what are we claiming our our harm is?
So we are, and that's actually, that's a great question, Paul, because I did reach out to our insurance adjuster. And it would be just on that $15,000 that I had initially pointed out to you. So it's not a huge amount, but I'm trying to explore every avenue I can. And the other piece that they did mention is they said, you know, they recommend and they're telling other school districts this as well that we file a claim. However, their attorneys are still trying to determine whether this pandemic is actually a course for us to be reimbursed for this, you know, whether that's enough. Does it, is it inactive pod? You know, how do they classify it? So like I said, I'm just trying to find any avenue that I can for for reimbursement.
Sure. And and then on the the unemployment claims that you said we might end up getting from former employees, but I guess I, and maybe this is my ignorance here, I don't know how this works. Were those former employees, members of the collective bargaining units and and I mean, is there, is there something in place where, you know, for the union to kind of step in and and help those folks or do they just go right to unemployment claims?
They would just go right to unemployment and it can vary. We're also seeing some of our daily substitutes file for unemployment as well. So, you know, it can, it can really vary in the number of people, but it would have to go straight to unemployment.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Is anyone else, any questions?
So just a general comment where obviously we've frozen the FY20 budgets. Sarah and our leadership team are Sarah and our leadership team are only making sure that essential expenses are moving forward and are looking closely at any additional savings. So we're monitoring and projecting out until the end of fiscal year 20. And our goal is to try to end the fiscal year with as much money as we can to to move into E and D with a goal of making sure that as we look at FY21 and beyond, we're in a position where we can react and adjust if the financial economic situation becomes dire.
So do I have a motion to vote until audited?
So moved.
So wait a second, was that Joan?
Yes.
Joan moved and Paul Bucka? Okay, so it's a roll call. So Kathy, yes, Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland? Kathleen Howland?
Yes, sorry.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Lauren Bailey?
Yes.
And Lynn Winter?
Yes.
Okay. So our next is a statement of revenue.
Again, I'll have Becky speak to our statement of revenue as of March 31st.
So as you can see in the statement of revenue report during the month of March, we actually received supplemental money in the form of regional transportation money and also homeless transportation payments from the state. So we had heard that those were coming, so we were definitely glad to to see that they had arrived into our account. Other than that, there were no significant variances from the previous month.
And just to comment around fees, so you'll see that far parking fees and student activity fees are 100% and 95.40%. So we're looking at those those fees and having a conversation around prorating and and reimbursing appropriately.
Paul?
Do I move the way accept the statement of revenue until audited?
Second.
Was that Lynn?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so first by Paul Bucka, second by Lynn Winters. Okay, another roll call. So Kathy, yes, Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right. Budget calendar.
So in your package is the budget calendar, I think the key dates obviously that we're eyeing are the town meeting dates, which are are set right now, but most likely will will change once again in the next few weeks. And you also have the FY21 School Committee Approved Budget. And I'd just like to make a comment that the leadership team and directors have started the process of taking a closer look at the School Committee Approved Budget and having some scenarios in place if the town administrators ask us to go back to the drawing board and look for some savings. Again, due to the economic climate. So it's an exercise at this point, but we'll be prepared to react and adjust to the fluid financial landscape. And we are working very closely with the town of South Pro and the town of North Pro around our FY21 School Committee Approved Budget. So more information will be presented in upcoming meetings as, again, we get more data and more information to react.
Any questions? All right, so old business, none at this time, policy development and distribution.
So just as a a matter of procedure, on the March 18th School Committee Agenda, we amended the agenda and amended agenda, removed all of the policies. But we vote, we went through and voted these policies at the March 18th meeting. So just in terms of procedure, I think it's important that we just go through these again and do the first read and vote to recommend or rescind so that again, it's just more of a procedural matter at this point.
So the first readings would be for the bully prevention and the conflict of interest?
Correct.
Okay. And then we're recommending to rescind Policy A120 and Policy G100. So I need a motion?
I would move for those two to be rescinded.
Okay, so Paul Bucka?
Second. Paul Desmond, second.
And Paul Desmond, second. All right, you ready again? So Kathy, yes, Kathleen Pulechko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's distribution for A100 and distribution for the review, the reviewed policy is J330 and J340. So audience sharing. None at this time. Personnel?
I'll turn it over to Heather Richards, Director of Human Resources, to give an update on Assistant Superintendent Search and Principal Search update.
Good evening. So I have brief updates on these positions. As you know, they stay confidential until a finalist is actually named. So for the Assistant Superintendent Search, we had the first round with the search committee. And there were parent, teachers, parents, school committee members and administrators on that search committee. And we had over 50 applicants, I shared that with you before. And the first round of interviews were very successful and three semifinalists were put forward for consideration. And just yesterday, we had a second round of interviews with the semifinalists. And on that committee were some members from the first committee and some new new members to be able to see the candidates. I would say that yesterday's interviews went very well. And we are currently in the process of preparing to name a finalist or finalists to be put forward for the next round. And Greg and I have been talking about what that next round actually looks like and we'll have more information on that shortly. So the next search that's happening right now is the high school principal search. And the search committee has met twice. There are 15 members on that search committee and candidates have been selected for interviews. Those interviews are beginning this week. And and I will have future updates on that search as that progresses.
Thank you. All right, Paul?
So just the, just a comment, I guess. Now, this is, this Assistant Superintendent job in my mind is a really big, very important hire. And, you know, I I'm positive the search committee is doing a fabulous job. But to to have it kind of winnowed down to a single finalist that gets presented to the school committee as a whole or the school committees as a whole. You know, it's, I mean, you know, what, you're not, you don't necessarily give us lots of choices there. It's like, you know, take it or leave it sort of thing. And and, you know, in in my mind, a little bit, if there were, if it's down to two or three candidates for for more of us, all of us, if we're interested to have a chance to at least review the resumes before, you know, two of those three people get just dismissed out of hand. You know, I just, I wish I could have been a tad more involved. I mean, the the committee requirements were such that you needed to be there for all of these things and do this and do that. And, you know, attendance was mandatory. And and as a result, I was pretty confident I probably couldn't do it and I backed off. And and a little bit shame on me, but I didn't know that when all was said and done, I would be given a choice of a person. And it sounds like that's where we're going. And I don't know, just speaking, just speaking for myself, I I kind of wish I had at least a little bit of a chance to see the semifinalists or at least read about the semifinalist resumes and and what their qualifications were. And maybe to be able to throw my two cents into the search committee to say, you know, this is what I'm thinking about. Before you weave the three down to one, you know, here's our feedback or at least here's this guy's feedback. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's, it's, I don't know. It's not sitting terrifically well with me that it's working out that way.
So Paul, it's it's Dan, wouldn't we have that exact opportunity? If you wanted as a school committee member to ask for the resumes of those who were not selected and to ask for the rationale as to why they were not and why the individual who was selected was selected? Couldn't you ask, could, could, could you not ask for that? I don't know the answer, I'm just inquisitive. Could you not ask for that information?
I mean, I guess, I I, so I'm not sure what the process is, Dan. I mean, it seems like by then, you know, we, I mean, the other, the others would be dismissed or or the finalists have been named.
And ultimately, I believe that the hire, yeah, and and again, they, I guess I should know this procedure, but I don't know exactly for this position. Is it our hire or is superintendent's hire?
It is the committee's hire.
Okay.
And I think traditionally, you know, Paul, to your point around, you know, why is it this way? It's, it's, this is how we've done business in the past in terms of hiring positions that we go through a process and a recommendation to bring a finalist to committee. And it's typically a person. So it's, it's more of a procedural piece than than anything in the past. If we want to change that, I I'm, you know, I'm confident that that the per, the right person will emerge. I think that we have, we had committee membership on both of the two committee interviews so far. So I'm I'm not opposed to change in the process because I think the end result will will yield the same result.
And Greg, if I may, you you would not put someone forward to this committee or the the, you know, you you have to have some say in this, right? I mean, the 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 objective is to ensure that the number two person is someone that you are going to be incredibly comfortable working with, confident in their abilities. And if that is not the case and someone is put forward that, you you know, you don't believe is the right person, I'm I I would be shocked if you wouldn't sound the alarm.
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately this is a key position for the district and the superintendent. And I think that I would, I'm very pleased with the three candidates that emerged from the first round of interviews. We we have outstanding candidates. Yesterday, we had three solid interviews, again, three people who are very capable and competent of doing the work. And for me, it's thinking about, okay, who who's sitting around the table in terms of the leadership team? And what don't we have in terms of of expertise and knowledge as a team? And who can complement, you know, who can complement skills that I don't have or areas of expertise that I don't have to bring to the work? And then ultimately, who can do the job of being a superintendent, who can compete for the job if, you know, for the next superintendent in our district? Not that it's, that it's the trajectory of this person, but it's important that that person can be the superintendent if called upon an emergency, as we discussed in terms of the succession plan at the last meeting.
Can I also add something? As somebody who has sat on more search committees than I actually cared to remember. So the process is the way it is for a lot of reasons, one of which is a high, high degree of confidentiality, right? A lot of these, a lot of the candidates don't want to be known. And in fact, we keep the confidentiality very, very close to the vest until we have one final person. And the 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 length of discussions that go on in these search committee meetings are incredibly long and detailed. And I just, before we decide that we're going to upend the the current process, we really need to look at why we do it the way we do it. And I think at some juncture, you just have to trust the search committee, right? It has to be unanimous, right? You, 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 you have to convince everybody on the search committee that this is the person we're going to move forward. So the the process is, I I would say the process is the way it is for a reason. And if you were to bring three candidates to the school committee and say, okay, what do you guys think? I mean, it would elongate the process unbelievably and also just cause a a lot of a lot of people, a lot of work. That's my two cents.
I just add a comment to that, you know, we, there is a school committee policy around the search process for the Director of Finance, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent and a few other positions. So the process that we are following is is per of school committee policy in terms of the makeup and dynamics of the committees and how interviews are conducted and so forth. So I'll just add that to the conversation.
This is Sean, I would say I I agree with Paul and Kathleen in some senses, Paul. If we were one committee, but because this this candidate's got to go to three different committees, I think it would be, I think that complicates it. If we were one committee hiring, I think it would be nice to have a couple of candidates come to us. But I think the it's a large search committee and we do have to trust them because the complexities of trying to get two candidates in front of multiple committees or or at least the combined committee that's so large would be would be pretty challenging.
Who's on, who's on this committee from from this group that we're in right now? Kathleen, are you on this?
Not, not me.
Heather, who's on this committee from the region?
On on the Assistant Superintendent? Kathy was on the committee.
Kathy Key.
Kathy Key. Thank you. And there were other administrators. Rhoda was on the committee. And Mary Ellen was on the committee, I I was on the committee. The other people were were from the other school committees.
Well, anyway, it was, you know, I just, you know, you got down to three candidates, all three of them must be very good or they wouldn't have made the final three. And then just somehow Kathy and and, you know, a bunch of people that aren't on our committee, you know, are gonna nail it down to one and and I I'm assuming we're gonna be asked to rubber stamp that selection. It it just, I don't know. This is a, this is a, this is a big job in my head and 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 I, I'm I'm a little disappointed that I couldn't maybe help in in as as it got winnowed down to the final last one or two candidates to be able to at least, you know, throw, even if I never met them or asked them any questions, to look at the, look at their resumes and offer Kathy, for example, my feedback on what I saw or what I thought. You know, we see lots of confidential stuff and, you know, the confidentiality thing doesn't bother me too much. I, we go to an executive session and and we never have leaks from what we talked about in the in those meetings. You know, I I think that that would not be a gating factor here. But, you know, if it's, if it's policy, I guess it's policy. But, I mean, just as one guy, I wanted to kind of make it clear that I'm less thrilled with the process than I thought I was gonna.
I think. The question? So I have a comment. It's okay, Ken. So I, you know, see that it is important hire. But I don't think that we can interview anyone. If we're, if we as a committee are conducting interviews and we're in the process, I don't believe you can do it in the executive session. And if, and if like for the Assistant Superintendent role, you know, candidates don't want necessarily their district to know. And that's, that's, that they're looking to move. And, you know, we've, we've hired a fair amount of. And, you know, we've, we've hired a fair amount of Assistant Superintendents in my time since I've been on this committee, following the same process. You know, what I wanted to have been involved early on, yeah, but I don't have, I don't, can't, couldn't have made that commitment. I couldn't foresee that probably all these interviews are happening virtually, and therefore I could have participated. But, you know, it's, there is a fair amount of people involved in the decision-making process. And I know there's been a lot of situations where we are, many situations where we're presented with one candidate that have gone through the search process. And then, you know, ultimately, it's, it's, I'm pretty sure, pretty much, almost every hire is that process of where we get the one candidate, and probably the only, I think, I think the process was a little different many years back for a superintendent hire. But for the most part, it, it, we've had all this, all of this process. So.
Yeah. Can I just ask, along those lines, Lynn, can I ask a question of Paul? And that is, I've been doing this for twelve years, and we have hired at least two assistants and two superintendents this way. So what has changed recently that has you concerned?
Well, there's only been two hires, so, at, at, at the Assistant Superintendent position. You know, in our, in our time, I think it's just been Christine and, and Greg.
Oh, there was someone else too, I forget where.
Yeah, there was.
Eva.
Who?
Eva.
Oh, okay, right. I don't know, I just, you know, it's, I'm, I'm looking at this as, as a big job. We got, we got involved in the succession planning conversation the other day. It, it's, you know, we, we're kind of redoing the, the org structure of the, of the central office. And, you know, I've just, I've, I've had it in my head that, you know, one of the things that I find most enjoyable and most important about my role on the school committee is making sure that the leadership team, that I've got something to do with the selection of the leadership team. You know, and kind of helping them do their job. And maybe, maybe it's just an attitude change on my part in the last, I don't know, X, X years or something. But, you know, the idea of just the, the committee just presenting a finalist and saying, here. It's just, you know, it's like vote to approve, well, you know, what, what, what is my choice? You know, at that point in time, and it just, it doesn't, you know, I, I, I had it in my head that we'd have some opportunity for a little more feedback there. I get it, I understand all the issues that we're talking about, but, you know, I don't know. Just, I wanted to kind of make my points to the, to the group here.
So Paul, my, my thought is, you know, and I, I, I hear what Lynn's saying, if, if all of us were on this, it couldn't be just one of you, what, right now Kathy is, right? So it, it's either a representative, or it's all of us. If it's all of us, how do we do that in confidence? Which is the process requires. We do have to rely on the, you know, the experience and the expertise of those who are on the committee. They're smart people all around. And I'm confident, like you said at the start, you were, you were confident that they're doing an outstanding job. My strong presumption is they are doing an outstanding job as well. And we all rely on other people to make recommendations to us. And if that recommendation comes to us, and you look at that resume and that individual, and you poke holes throughout that resume and that individual, then I'm confident you're gonna be a strong no, and you're a persuasive guy. You know, thought, you, you know, what, what you say carries a lot of weight, I know with me, and, and likely with others. And, you know, if we find that we're presented with a candidate who is deficient in a number of areas, I'm gonna vote no also, and then we'll go back to the drawing, we'll ask the committee to go back to the drawing board and try again. Absent that, I think we, we rely on the expertise of others, not ourselves, that we have to have confidence in, who have been in education, and who understand what the role requires. And have, and have looked at a lot of resumes, and have done it in a way that we as a full group likely would not be able to.
I hear you, Dan, and, you know, and, I mean, the, the flip side of that is, it's a lot harder to point, to poke holes in a single resume when I'm not able to compare and contrast it to the resume of the person, the guy or the gal who almost got selected. And, and, you know, that, just, just being able to see the other one or two, I don't know, I just.
And it, yeah.
I'm not gonna make any headway here, and.
Well, I, I asked Heather, like I started out.
And Kathy, I'm not trying to badmouth anything about your involvement in the committee.
No, but I don't even think, so I guess, you know, we had a really great conversation with all the candidates yesterday. But I also, you know, even if you, and I'm sorry that you weren't part of the conversation. I think that even if you, you maybe have to poke holes through somebody's resume, but if you talk to them, you know, like we did, it would answer questions for you that, you know, it answers questions for us anyways, that a resume may not show.
Yeah, can I, can I make a point there? I mean, I've been involved in, I guess, one of these, but it went to two rounds. Because, I guess, Paul, I understand your frustration, but I, I think you just have to respect the work of these committees, because it is incredibly detailed. Like the one I was on, we put, we put forward a candidate, and the superintendent said no. So we had to do the whole thing all over again. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that goes on, it's a very thorough process. And so I, I think to say that we're presented with one candidate, it almost minimizes the work that goes into this, because an awful lot of thought goes into the picking that one candidate. And to me, I mean, you just have to, just have to trust the people that are participating.
And I think we've, we've talked it enough, I mean, I, you know, I've made my point, and clearly, you know, the process is, is the process, the policy is the policy, and it will, it will continue the way it's going. I, I don't want to belabor it and tie the, tie the group up anymore, but I just wanted to kind of throw my two cents out there.
Can I add something? And I, and I appreciate listening to everybody else's viewpoint, and Paul especially yours too. And if it is a policy, maybe there is something that we can look forward to, is, you know, Paul, I worked with you on the policies, is maybe looking at that policy and seeing what could be changed, you know, and take your feelings into it. And there also is something in Mass General Law that says that the superintendent, I think it's Mass General Law, Section fifty-nine, I, I was just looking it up. And it says where the superintendent makes the recommendation to the school committee. So I think we've got to trust Greg and his, and Greg, have you been on? It sounded like you were on the interview process, is that true?
I was, I think, I just, just a quick comment, I know, you know, to Paul's point, we've talked a lot about this. I think, going back to last year, where we were in the search for an Assistant Superintendent last year, only one candidate made it out of the first round of interviews. I, as the incoming superintendent, was given one choice of a candidate as the next Assistant Superintendent. That did not feel good in terms of having one choice, that the committee moved forward. Christine and I interviewed that candidate and decided that it wasn't, the person wasn't the right fit. I guess the point is that where we are today with, you know, Rhoda Webb being the interim Assistant Superintendent was the result of a search process where we didn't feel like we had the right candidate, and we wanted to give it the time to be able to make sure we find the right candidate. So, I mean, I think it's definitely worth revisiting and thinking about, is there a better way to do this? So it's more inclusive? But I think, you know, again, I think we've talked about the policy and the process, and, you know.
And, and Paul, I just want to say that I appreciate your feedback, and, and hearing your, your position. And that in the, the other assistant search committees that I've led elsewhere, this is a very, very standard kind of process. But I think that we're willing to take a look at it.
Can I just make one comment? It doesn't have to do with this, actually, it has to do with the distribution of the personnel report. I do want to wish Mr. Cushing and Ms. Bond the best of luck in their retirement. My kids, all three of my kids had Mr. Cushing, and he's just such a phenomenal, he's a great teacher, but he's just a good person. He came to sporting events, and it was just, he was such a good, good person. And Mrs. Bond was awesome, Hayden had her last period, and during hockey, he would be, always be so tired, so she'd make him do laps. Around the school before the class, and she, she just really got the kids and understood them, and, and they'll be really missed. So, my two cents. So our next is communications, which there's none at this time. Approval of bills and payroll, so we're now on DocuSign, so Kathleen and I have done that already this week. And the agenda items for next month. Greg?
Do we have school choice, public hearing and vote? I know that I will be sending out in the packet information about school choice. I think that, I think we should, and I'll make a recommendation in the packet, but I think we should take a, a close look at school choice. And have a, a pretty serious conversation around what that would look like for Algonquin in the light that is, it is one potential way to generate some revenue. And I think, given the fiscal landscape, I think it's something that we need to look very closely at moving forward this year. And then we have the library presentation.
So we still have that?
Yes.
Okay.
In terms of future agenda items, I was wondering about school start time and music study group. And I know they've sort of been put on hold, I think Kathleen, I cut you off, that's what you were gonna say. Yeah, so what's the progress on that? And will they be able to present to our committees this school year?
So that is on the, school start time is on the April twenty-ninth combined school committee meeting.
Okay.
And then Rhoda can speak to the music study group. We've had a bit of a, a break from it because of the COVID nineteen situation, but Rhoda doesn't intend to, again, reconvene the, the group and continue the work.
That's right. The, the, the meeting that we had in April, it was just too close to the school closure, but we will reschedule that meeting and stay on track.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else that anybody wants on the agenda? Alright, so, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So do I, do I have to read this, right?
I think so.
Okay, so, we're going to an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intention to return to open meeting. So Dan, did you motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Paul Bucka, second? Alright, it's a roll call, so me, yes, Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
Kathleen Howland?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Lynn? Thank you, everyone who's on the call, and stay healthy.